We will call the Planning Commission meeting charter at nine oh one, it looks like. And for roll call, we have a number of new members. First of all, Commissioner Purnell called in sick today, so she will be not with us today. And we have a new timber representative, Mr. Randy Jacobzone, and a new fifth district representative, Diana Wedemer.
Wedeman.
Wedeman. My best friend in high school was named Wedemer. That was her last name, so I hope I get that right.
Molly expected her.
And we do expect Commissioner Warner, but the roads being where they are, she may be a moment late. The first thing that takes care of roll call, first thing is election of a new chair and vice chair on our agenda. Any nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate the existing slate.
You do?
Yes.
Well, I would like to nominate Commissioner Ogilvy for chair. And is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay. What else do we do? Are there any other nominations? Is it okay if we move this back until Commissioner Warner gets here? I would feel better about that if we could. Is that all right, to change the order of the agenda?
Or we need to elect her while she's not here?
Deputy County Council Matthew Gudrowski, do we know when she's going to get here? Do we want to try and hold off for 10 minutes or 20 minutes?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind just holding off a little. I think it's probably because of IC roads, that she's just driving slowly.
If that's the case, I might just postpone, pause the meeting until we can do that, because without, there's no current chair or vice chair of the Planning Commission. So if we're doing that upfront, I would rather try and get that done first.
What do you think?
Can we go on with like the consent calendar or the reports from the director and staffer and that, or no?
We can do the director's report, I mean, right now, and then after there's no one here, I think we just hold the meeting.
And then we can do it regardless of what happens.
Do what, regardless of what happens?
Hold the election.
We can hold the election now, if we wanted to, since there's five members of the commission there. I just wouldn't hold the items and go forward the rest of the meeting without electing the chair and vice chair.
No, I agree with that. Well, why don't we hear the director's report, if there is a director's report, and see if Commissioner Warner shows up, and if not, we'll just go on with the order of the agenda.
All right, I'll go ahead. Thank you, Madam Chair, Brent Schultz, Planning and Building Services Director. First up on my report is that we have hired a new planner, one Matt Goines is here behind me. He was in our coastal code enforcement offices and applied and got the position. We're excited about him being a planner, and I'm sure he's going to do a good job. He's already asking lots of questions, reading a lot, which is good. You've got to read a lot with our code. And I'm sure he's going to be, he's going to be a great addition for our team. Second up was, I want to give you an update on the accessory dwelling unit projects that we got working. Our goal there with the board is to bring that forward. We had a really, a great meeting with the Coastal Commission and our consultant and Julia, and I think, you know, we're, I guess I can say, we're thinking of the same approach on this thing and how to bring it forward. We're going to go forward March 12th to the Board of Supervisors with an informational staff report, and you'll see in that report how we're approaching that ordinance, and there's some, a couple of questions and direction that we want from the Board of Supervisors. Then we would, after we get, bring the ordinance back to you for recommendation onto the Board of Supervisors, and then ultimately on to the Coastal Commission. So we're, I'm hopeful that's going to get done soon. That's, I've been pushing, pushing on that, and that's, once that gets done, I think that's going to help provide more housing opportunities in that coastal zone. Also, in addition to that, we're working with a consultant right now to get these accessory dwelling unit drawings done as quick as possible, so we can hand those out at the front counter for free. We've, I know that's been talked about for a long time. When I got here, I heard about it and worked with county council, and we've got a process and they're working on the drawings now. So we're going to have a couple drawings to hand out to people soon. And I'd like it to coincide with when you consider this accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and hopefully that gets adopted and it moves forward. Third thing is on the RF, we've put, we're going to be putting an RFP out pretty quickly here, next week or so. We have to do our housing element, that's required by state law, and we have to select a consultant, and so Julia will be putting that out. You'll probably see that go out in a couple weeks. We will have interviews, select a consultant, and then we start that process to get a housing element done and to you. It's going to be challenging this year. We have more units to show we can produce in the county, and I know last time I heard the stories how difficult it was to find sites. I've done a number of housing elements. It's always difficult to find sites that are ready for housing development, so you'll see that soon. Third, I wonder, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for Yucaya Airport has been an issue here for a while. It's an old 1996 plan. It does not comply with the current Department of Aeronautics handbook that Caltrans uses to help commissions, councils, committees, commissions, boards to prepare these documents. We've come to an agreement with Yucaya where we will work together with them jointly to prepare a new club. You're going to be seeing that when it comes through. It's going to be about a five to eight month process, about $130,000. We're just going to look at Yucaya Airport because of the, there's so much demand on that airport for economic development, for new projects. There's compatibility issues with that, and you will see that in a joint meeting with the City of Yucaya Planning Commission, as well as the City Council and the Board of Supervisors will see it. You don't approve it, but you need to know what's going on in it and be supportive of it, because it could result in general plan changes or zoning changes. So I've negotiated with them on a scope of work and a contract that goes with it. Matt helped out a lot with that. We think it's good, but it's, but it is a long process, and it's not simple. There's a lot that has to be looked at, and you'll see it in probably five to eight months. Julia and our staff will be working on that, as well as county council. You need to know that cannabis has two new ad hocks, one on cultivation and one on economic development, and we're, I'm very involved in the economic development ad hoc. I go to all of them, but that's going to be one that I'll be working on, and I'm sure you'll hear more about that. It's really looking at, you know, a bigger picture of cannabis, and what are we doing? And what is, what are our competitors in other counties and cities around us doing? And maybe where are we, should we position ourselves? Are there other things we should do with our ordinances, you know, other than what we've been doing? So I'm excited to be working on that. And also, the other, the last board meeting, there was a board-directed staff to prepare a moratorium on hemp, and then also GMO cannabis, so that issue, so that, you'll see that come forward from the Department of Agriculture to be looking at that. So that's about it. I want to congratulate the new commission members. I'm excited to be working with you, as well as Julia and all our staff. We've got a lot to do this next year. There's a lot on our plate, and we're really going to need your direction, help and your input to get things done, so I'm excited to be working with you. That concludes my report.
Any questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions. Brent, could you clarify, I think I'm right, on the accessory dwelling units, was that just for the coastal area, was that for the whole county?
Well, yeah, it's just the coastal area. We already have done the inland accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Now, this is, is the coastal ordinance, where they were prohibited in our, in our codes there. Now we'd be writing them in that they are, they would be allowed if you supported it and it went on to the board and they supported it, and if the Coastal Commission supports it. You know, there's this, you know, I guess dichotomy where, in the ordinance is currently, where it does not allow them. It allows guest cottages, but not these accessory dwelling units. But the state law is now, no, you have to allow them. And so it gets a little more difficult on the coastal zone, because we've got a small highway out there, and how are we going to, you know, we don't want to over-impact that from a traffic standpoint, but yet we want to allow more housing out there. So we've been working on those things with coastal commissions, and I was, you know, really pleased with the discussions with them. I think it's going to move forward. I think everyone's going to like it. And hopefully we can get, if it gets approved, we can get some more housing for people on the coast. I know it's there, it's a really difficult problem. People, I'm always being called, it's called the other day, somebody can't find housing for their daughter, and they work on the coast, they want her to stay there, so this would be a way we could allow them to do it on the coast, so.
It's always been difficult there with supply and demand. Will that be similar to the inland accessory dwelling unit?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good.
If I may, I'll just add on there that in the coastal zone, the challenge that we're looking at right now is we have to create a ministerial coastal development permit process, which, as you know, coastal development permits are typically discretionary, just with what the review is that's required for them. So it will be slightly different, where it's not going to be as broad, where the inland ordinance essentially allows it, where you can demonstrate you have adequate water and septic and can meet setback requirements. In the coastal zone, there will be more limitations in terms of when you can have these by right, in terms of the ministerial building permit process, and where you may need to also get a coastal development permit in order to accommodate them. So it'll be slightly different, but the intent is really the same, to have 1,200 square foot accessory dwelling units, consistent with state regulations.
Thank you, Julia. And I had one other question on the cannabis economic development program that you'll be working on. Was there any consideration of looking at other states who have been involved with legalized cannabis for quite some time, and looking at their economic developments? I brought this up before it was even approved here, and never really understood why we couldn't get on board with other states where it's been successful. So is that something you'll be looking into?
Yes, I'm going to be talking to everybody. Ann Vandy was at the meeting yesterday, and I've committed, I'm going to reach out to everybody and try to find out where's everybody successful, what do they see as things that didn't work, and see, you know, see how it, does it apply to us, or does it not apply to us? I think it's going to be exciting analysis. We have two board members in there, you know, the board member Williams and also Jurdie are in those meetings, so, and I think it's going to, I hope it's fruitful. I've been reading a ton every night, you know. My wife wants to talk to me. I've been reading articles in the Sacramento Bee, the Press Democrat, and everywhere I can find anything about how the market is going with this. It's not an easy analysis, you know, because so much is happening, it's so new, but, yeah, we're going to be looking at everybody.
Other states as well as California?
Yes.
Because this is new to the whole state.
Yes. And we compete now, our state does against, what, 32 other states have, or 33, I think, are total in America right now. It's legal.
Okay, thank you.
On the, the new housing element, if there's a conflict with the CCNRs, what takes precedent?
Julia Ackert, Chief Planner. So we, our department does not enforce CCNRs, so really those are landowner-to-landowner agreements. So really, our, our policies would take precedent in terms of our review. Of course, individual property owners, they're taking their own risk if they're not compliant with codes, covenants, and restrictions that may apply to their property.
On the housing ordinance, or the housing plan, I would also be very interested to have some brief report at that same time about what we've collected in inclusionary housing fees and what plans we've made for that.
That, we'll give that to you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff before we move on to election? Okay, we, we decided to wait for Commissioner Warner, because we thought maybe IC roads were slowing you up a little bit. We do have one nomination on the floor, which is Marilyn Ogilvy for chair. Any other nominations? Seeing none?
Not for chair.
All in favor of the nomination, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And though she is sick today, I wish to nominate Commissioner Purnell for vice chair. Anybody care to second that?
I'll second. Molly?
Okay. She is aware of this nomination too, by the way. This has not sprung on her. So anyway, all in favor of that nomination, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, looks like we have a new slate. I'm turning my gavel over to Commissioner Ogilvy, and I am moving on down.
Do we need to change places? Is that kind of the?
I could just give you the gavel, or you can move. I assumed you would want to move. I'll just switch with you right now, but, because then we won't have to do too much. There's your purse. Okay, we're good to go.
Okay, I guess we now have matters from public. The Planning Commission welcomes participation in commission meetings. The item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the county, of the commission that are not on the posted agenda, and items which have not already been considered by the commission. No action will be taken. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name's Kelly Grimes. I'm an architect.
Could you come up to the microphone, so we get you on our...
Good morning. My name's Kelly, Kelly Grimes, and I'm an architect on the coast, and I appreciate Planner Goines' advancement to become planner, but I'm a little concerned that his replacement for enforcement, because enforcement's a big deal. There are a bunch of rules that I constantly have to go through, hoops to jump through, and then the enforcement is lacking, in my opinion. Whether you're talking about the town of Mendocino, its historic character, whether, you know, anywhere along the coast, you know, as I'm on the planning side, and I have to put in plans and jump through hoops and get, you know, all kinds of consultants involved and do studies, and then the neighbor, you know, at the same time I'm doing all this, the neighbor's just building what they want, because there's very little enforcement. So I'm concerned that our enforcement, our one enforcement person has been advanced, and there's no replacement. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, I just would like to advise, we do have a replacement for code enforcement, Officer Matt Goines, who was moved over to our Yucaya office, and the replacement in the coastal office, her name is Gretchen McLaughlin, and she started, gosh, probably about a month or so ago, so she has taken over that enforcement role in the coastal zone. So they do have presence in our Fort Bragg office in terms of enforcement.
Thank you, Julia. Any other matters from public? I don't see anyone. And thank you, Mr. Grimes, for your comments. We appreciate that. We go on to the consent calendar. Is there anything on the consent calendar? No? Okay. Then we'll go on to our regular calendar. Case 6A MS 2018 0005, with the owner Eric Larson and Iliana Marino. This is request for a subdivision of a three, 4.9 acre parcel into two parcels of 2.4 and 2.5 acres.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Welcome to the new chair. As stated by Chair Ogilvy, this is a subdivision of a 4.9 acre parcel into two parcels of 2.4 and 2.5 acres. The owner applicant is Eric Larson. The project is located just north of the town center, on the west, the town center of Leightonville, on the west side of US Highway 101. It's about 200 feet north of its intersection with Branscombe Road, as you can see here on this map. The parcel is located in a rural community general plan district and located in a commercial, general commercial zoning district, along with the community character combining district. The parcel is partially developed with a multi-use commercial structure, which currently houses the Asian, the Asian Palace restaurant, as well as Boomers. The western portion of the parcel, which, wrong way. There we are. This western portion of the parcel remains undeveloped, and currently, the, what's her name? Tesla is building charging stations in this portion of the parking lot. The parcel utilizes an onsite septic system, but is located within the Leightonville Water With regards to agency comments, the two agencies that provided the most comments were the Department of Transportation and the Department of Fish and Wildlife. With regards to the Department of Transportation, their conditions were further provided during the subdivision committee. With regards to the Fish and, Department of Fish and Wildlife, they requested that any future development go through their review due to a rare plant species that's in the vicinity of this area. So condition number four was crafted outside of the subdivision committee. With regards to the key issues, the proposed subdivision was found to be consistent with both the general plan, as well as the zoning district of C2, which has a minimum parcel size, when you're just in a water district, of I believe 12,000 square feet. And these are proposed to be two acres, so there's more than enough square footage to meet that requirement. The proposed project, as I stated, is in the community character combining district, which is a combining district that kind of dictates how structures can be built in a, how would you describe it, design? We're currently working on how to determine what the community character is for each community, but it will limit certain types of uses. For example, like a McDonald's would not be able to go in there. With regards to the division of land regulations, the project was heard by the subdivision committee on December 13th, where they approved the subdivision, or they recommended approval of the subdivision with conditions. With regards to environmental protection, the project was, a negative declaration was conducted for the project, which found that no environmental impacts would take place that were significant. In addition to the current conditions, I do have a memo. At some point between the subdivision committee and writing the staff report, there was a miscommunication of the condition of, condition number 16. So my memo just states that the current condition 16 shall be replaced with the following language. There shall be provided a 50-foot radius, or a 40-foot wide by 80-foot long easement at the terminus of the access easement for the proposed, for the purpose of providing a turnaround. That was the condition that DOT had provided in their comment letter, but unfortunately there was a disconnect between that comment letter and the subdivision committee, so that is just correcting that condition. Additionally, concerns were brought to me, actually by Commissioner Purnell, about the oak tree, which, let me switch real quick. So this oak tree, kind of just northwest of the paved area, there's been concerns about its removal. So I crafted a condition that just states the removal of the large oak tree identified attachment, one of this memo shall be prohibited. I have not added this condition to the, to the project. I would like there to, the applicant to discuss his opinion of the condition, and it will be the action of the commission, the final action of the commission on whether, whether or not to adopt that condition. And with that, staff recommends adoption of the negative declaration and grant the subdivision to the applicant. Thank you.
Any questions for staff from the commission?
Sure. How do you determine what would, what businesses would not be allowed to build on that property?
So Vandy, Planning and Building. There, the community combined district entails a design review. However, from my knowledge, we are currently trying to determine what that design review is. But there are four types of land uses that must be reviewed when they are being proposed in that facility, and that includes, I believe, eating establishments, food and drink, beverage, retail, eating established, no, eating, eating without consumption, and I believe there was, I think, retail sales and services.
If I may, through the chair, Julia Ackert-Croggs. So the community character combining district was really coming from the formula business moratorium. I don't know if you recall when that first came forward. It really got spurred after the Dollar General business was approved in Redwood Valley. So the community character, it's intended not necessarily to prohibit that uses can be established, but to require a discretionary review, so that for these sorts of businesses, if they meet the criteria of a formula business, which means they have two or more standardized features, and this is all described within our ordinance in the zoning code, then they would be subjected to a use permit, as opposed to being allowed by right, which allows then a discretionary review, comment by the public, and involvement more of the public, as well as a hearing would occur on the item before anything could be approved. So it's not necessarily that it's not allowed, it's just that it would be subjected to a heightened level of review.
Sure. Yep. Thank you. It's a much better explanation.
Any other comments or questions? I have a couple.
Yes.
A number of years ago, if my memory serves me correctly, at one time, there was going to be a mini mart and gas station, I believe, to the north of this, and if my memory serves me correctly, they were also going to put in charging stations. Can anybody remember that one, or? I think it was where there used to be a restaurant that was torn down, and I just wondered what...
I remember that vaguely, but I don't remember about the charging stations. I do remember the restaurant that was torn down.
Well, I remember part of the discussion with the applicant who was applying for that, he was going to put in kind of a little, nice little store, so that people could, they would be there for a while to have their electric vehicles charged, and that's why it kind of sticks in my head, but.
If I may, through the chair, I can respond for that. So that use permit actually has expired. The applicant did not ever conduct any activities that would have vested that use permit, so that entitlement has become null and void. If they wish to undertake that same improvements in the future, they'll have to reapply with our department.
Okay.
Was that the parcel to the north?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's directly to the north. I would want to pull up a map to give you definitively exactly how close that is, which I can certainly do if you would like for me to bring that back.
It was pretty close to Boomers, though. It was pretty close.
Sure.
I think it was just north of it.
Yes, and I did have personal contact with the applicant as well, and the use permit just expired this last year. We were in communication prior to the expiration, but unfortunately, you know, there were some pretty hefty conditions on that permit that just made it very challenging for that applicant to be able to take that project forward.
Okay. Thank you, Julia. Thank you, Julia. And then another question I had, with the change in condition number 16, I'm a little unclear. Is that in addition to the wording that we have in the original condition? Or is that condition totally void and we're just taking in the new condition? I'm a little confused there.
Sure. Vandy planning a building. The, the current language that you're looking at, the 16, that's talking about, I think, a hammerhead turnaround, that will be completely replaced by the language in the memo.
Okay. So number 16 is out and the new number 16 is in?
Correct.
Okay. And then, this number. So you're requesting an additional, I assume that would be condition number 19 for the removal of the, or non removal of the oak tree?
Yes. If we included the condition about the oak tree, it would become condition 19.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments about that? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess at this point, we need a, an motion, or a motion to approve. Oh, sorry, thank you. Is the applicant here to address it? Thank you. I'm new to this, so bear with me. Thank you. Do you have any comments, sir? Please come up to the- And state your name for the record?
Need to hit a button or?
It should be on.
Testing?
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Eric Larson. I guess I would like to address the new condition that's being requested about the tree. Just for everybody here, and I've actually brought a statement of fact I've signed to put this in the record book and that to Vandy. Oh. That, we love the tree. I've lived in Leightonville my whole life. And we have no intentions of taking down any trees on this parcel, near term or long term. But I do have a concern about the way the condition is written, because the way it states is that tree has to be there in perpetuity. Eventually, trees come to the end of their life. Hopefully, that's a long time away. But when that does come, that tree will pose a safety hazard. And being forced to keep it there is something that I don't think we want to have as a condition. At some point, some limbs or the whole tree will have to come down. So I'm asking the team here to-
So you would like language about the health of the tree included there or something?
That's an interesting idea that I talked to Vandy about. And in reflecting on that, because there's no procedure or precedence for this, I think it would be challenging for us to write something like that. Do I have to come forward with a third-party expert that says the tree needs to go versus the county's third-party expert? Or how do we conduct the health of the tree and decide is it just a limb or the whole tree? Or, I just, I just don't know. And I just think it'd be very complicated. The tree is really healthy right now. Those trees live a long time. But they also, for those that have been in the valley, they, they'll just go. And when it gets to be a concern, I do have a company I work with that's local. Couple other trees on the parcel to the north, we've had to take measures to make them safe. So saying I have to keep it there in perpetuity, knowing it has a finite life, is in conflict. And at some point, it will pose a safety risk. So I think we want to avoid that. And the best I could offer, it's not a guarantee, but it's our assurance that we don't plan to take down the tree. It is an asset to the property. That's my only comment.
Mr. Larson, will you be doing any paving around that tree?
No, it's been that way for a long, long time, actually. Dad did, you know, all the existing fill that's around it. So it's been that way my whole life. And so there's nothing planned to look forward. We're planning to sell the developed section and retain the other section. There's no plans to do anything with it. Is there any questions I could answer?
But don't go far, because we'll have to work on the condition.
Okay. Yeah, my hope is that the statement of fact would be accepted in lieu of a hard condition.
And what did you present to staff? It wasn't new language, was it? Or recommended language?
No. It was just a statement of fact.
Yes, the applicant has submitted a statement of fact. There are no current nor future plans to remove any oak trees on the referenced minor subdivision parcel. The trees are a valued asset to the property. So staff, perhaps you could give the commission a recommendation or up for discussion?
Julia Acker-Crogg, chief planner. So with this condition, you know, this really falls to the discretion of the commission. I certainly, staff understands the concern from Mr. Larson, because the reality is that, you know, trees, they have a lifespan on them. So, you know, the commission, my recommendation would be to you to either consider whether or not this condition is absolutely necessary at this time for this project and/or considering if you want to write some flexibility into that condition to allow that should that tree die in the future, that there's maybe replanting or something that's done consistent with our general plan policies pertaining to oak woodland areas and to oaks in general. So that's really, you know, I would want to defer to the commission in terms of what you feel is most appropriate for this site. But staff would recommend that you provide some flexibility within that condition should you recommend, should you want to adopt that. So that Mr. Larson is not put into a situation that's, you know, impossible in terms of when that tree will eventually come to its life, life end, so.
Okay, thank you. Comments from any commissioners?
Well, I could suggest that I have seen situations where the landowner is required to get a consultant involved in either a licensed arborist or a licensed forester to evaluate the tree. When at some point you feel it's become dangerous, then I would think it would, it would be, it would be advantageous for you to hire someone to make an evaluation. And we could evaluate it at that, at that time as to whether the tree should be removed or not removed.
So what's the current wording for this?
The current wording, it's contained at the bottom of the memorandum that was handed out today.
It just says the removal-
I think the wording is fine. The, it says the removal of the large oak tree identified attachment one shall be prohibited. So, you know, at some point where it falls down or is about to fall down, you know, it's just that the landowner can't currently remove it.
If I may through the chair, staff would just recommend then that you add at the end of that condition then a statement that would state that when the tree reaches the end of its lifespan, that the owner has authorization to remove that tree at that point. Because my concern would just be otherwise, we would just leave the tree to the point where it falls down. And that could create a safety hazard for folks that are using the property there if you have a tree that's not in good health.
If I may.
What I would suggest is maybe it wouldn't be, if the tree becomes diseased or aged to it's going to fall down, maybe it would be bringing in a third party. So just to evaluate that, you get a written note from an arborist and bring it forward in order to take the tree down, if we're protecting the tree.
Perhaps staff could give us a recommendation, a legal recommendation as to how we could word that?
And I seriously do not think that the applicant should have to come back to the commission in that case. He should just get an opinion and do the thing.
If we may through the chair, we would ask for a five to 10-minute recess so that way we could work on language to present to the commission for that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll take a five or 10 minute. Great.
Are we on? Okay, I think we'll go ahead and reconvene the meeting. I think staff has come up with a solution to our condition number 19.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski. The revised new condition would read as follows, and I will copy this over to the clerk when we're done. A note shall appear on the parcel map that reads as follows. The removal of the large oak tree identified on the parcel map shall be prohibited. This prohibition shall not include the pruning of any such trees for maintenance or the removal of such trees if necessary to address safety or disease concerns. Removal of the tree for safety or disease concerns shall be determined by a certified arborist or registered professional forester. So prior to removing it or pruning it, the owner of the parcel is required to go to one of those two individuals or entities, obtain the report, and then can go forth and do. We're not looking at inserting a requirement then that there be subsequent approval by planning and building that yes, that's okay. This is just a safety mechanism that someone would have been obtained to provide a report. So if we ever get any issues of hey, they cut down a tree, we would talk to the landowner at that point, look for their report if it was there. It needs to be done in conformance with the report.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
I have one thing. Perhaps that wording could somehow be involved with staff so that if this issue comes up again, we already have the wording for it. I mean, maybe everything's not going to be the same, but I think there would be similarities, and it'd be nice to have that cookie cutter statement.
If I may through the chair, that's an excellent suggestion. I will say for myself, I keep a long list of all the conditions of approval that we've done on various permits, so that way we're not reinventing the wheel every time a similar issue comes up. So I will make sure that this goes into our list of conditions of approval. So for projects like this in the future, we have that available for our staff.
Great. Thank you, Julia.
Well, it's two statements. One response to that, there is board direction for the county development oak woodlands preservation ordinance, so that process may well give us more zoning code language and requirements related to oak trees and their removals. That's something that is part of the work plan for this year, if I'm right. Second, I just wanted to add one more initial statement to the condition that the tree, we can't identify on the map this thing, this tree that was identified as attachment number one. So I'll add one more sentence to what I read. The tree identified in attachment one shall be identified on the parcel map. Just making sure to close the loop on that.
Great, thank you. And is the applicant comfortable with this?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. I believe we're to the point of needing a motion then? Oh, sorry, sorry. The applicant's spoken, we need public. Does anyone from the public wish to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for a motion.
Well, I will move since Allison isn't here. The recommended motion with the addition of condition 19 as read into the record by staff and making all the required findings.
And I believe there was a change in condition number 16 as well?
Oh, that's right. And with the condition number 16 shall be corrected in accordance with the staff memo from Vandy that there shall be provided a 50-foot radius or a 40-foot wide by 80-foot long easement in the terminus of the access easement for the purpose of providing a turnaround. That would be the amendment to condition 16. And then the addition of condition 19 as described by Mr. Kudrowski.
Do we have a second?
I'll sign it.
Guess we have a vote?
Yes?
Yes. I wish I wasn't first.
You're newest.
Commissioner Wedeman?
I abstain.
Commissioner Warner?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Holtkamp?
Yes.
Chair Ogil? Yes. So the item has passed.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners.
Thank you, Vandy. Now we'll go on to case U 2016, 0015, and V 2017, 0001. The applicant is Christopher Hoagie. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yeah.
Sorry? Hoagie, okay. And this is for a coastal development use permit, and I'm not going to go into the details because we all have them in writing. So Julia, I guess you're on.
Thank you, Chair Ogil. So this application was submitted back in 2016, and so it's been through quite a long process, so it's nice to see it finally coming in front of the commission today after they've gotten all the issues sorted out. So with this, the request today is for a coastal development use permit to refurbish 60 existing campsites at the Mendocino campground, which is now referred to as Mendocino Grove campground. Construction, the project includes construction of a new barn, a new caretaker's residence, a registration tent, remodel and expansion of the existing bathhouse, and construction of two new bathhouses. Associated work consists of construction of additional parking, a barbecue area with fire pit, a yoga deck, breakfast preparation screened area, installation and repair of path lights, and two new signs. The applicant is also requesting a variance to our parking standards for 21 parking spaces to be located within the required yard setback, and additionally, a variance for sign area for the property. So staff has reviewed the project and gone through the extensive history of related applications that are on site, and you will see those are described within the staff report. Those related applications were projects undertaken by a previous owner of this site where they were seeking to establish a more intensive resort use on that site. Those were not approved and often were required to prepare an EIR, which ultimately ended up, you know, killing the project for most of those cases. With regards to site characteristics, you'll see here on the location map that the site is located about a half mile south of the town of Mendocino and is bordered on the western property boundary by Comanche-Yukaya Road and then on the western property boundary by State Route 1. The site's primary access is off State Route 1, and there's no proposed change to existing access to the site. The applicant does propose to construct what will be a commercial driveway approach on to Comanche-Yukaya Road that will provide for emergency exit out of the facility for both people that are staying at the facility, as well as provide a route for fire trucks and such to come into the site and emergency vehicles. There's an existing paved access road that leads up from the State Route 1 encroachment and leads to the top of the hill where most of the existing and proposed development is located. There's a variety of gravel roads that sort of traverse the top of the hill where the existing development is, and those are proposed for minor improvements in certain areas in order to allow for compliance with CAL FIRE recommendations, as well as ensuring that those are adequate for a fire truck to be able to enter and exit off of those areas. This project site is an existing campground, as I described before, which has 60 existing campsites, and they operate only during a portion of the year, which is described within the applicant's statement. This site is highly constrained. It contains Northern Bishop Pine Forest and Grand Fir Forest, which covers the bulk of the property. There's very minimal areas that actually meet sensitive habitat area setbacks from these identified resources. The challenge here is that this site was established long before these rare plant communities were recognized as sensitive. So here, the applicant does have a right for these improvements to be located within the sensitive habitat area, and our code does allow that they can be refurbished to a certain extent, provided there's mitigating conditions, which I will get to later in my presentation. This site is located within an area that's designated as a very high fire hazard severity rating. Therefore, CAL FIRE and Mendocino Fire Protection District were both referred the application for any comments or concerns that they may have, and those are addressed in the conditions of approval. This site is also located within a marginal water resource area but has existing water in septic facilities, and the site does not have any indication of any sort of faults, landslides, erosion, or any flood hazard associated with where the development's occurring. So in terms of general plan and zoning consistency, the site is both designated and zoned as rural residential with a five-acre minimum. This allows, it's primarily intended for residential development, but with the combining districts of asterix 5C, which is applied to this property, they are allowed to develop a visitor-serving and accommodation facility of a resort use type with the approval of a coastal development use permit. And that is why this application is in front of you today with the coastal development use permit aspect. I would like to note, there is a note on the map 17 of the Mendocino County Local Coastal Program that states when you have a resort facility such as this that's being established over multiple separate legal parcels, that there be a limitation on that property being divided or sold separately unless there's either a local coastal program amendment adopted, the use is discontinued, or new use permits are obtained for the activities that are there. So staff, I will get to that. I'd like to add that as a condition of approval, and I will provide that language when I get to that portion of the presentation here. This application also proposes one employee housing unit, which is going to be constructed over the top of the bathhouse that's proposed, and this is allowable under the zoning code when you have a resort and recreational facility to have employee caretaker housing unit. So that is consistent with zoning code requirements. This site, all structures meet the required 30-foot setback from all property boundaries and also meet the required corridor preservation setbacks. It's, the only exception to this in terms of meeting property setbacks is pertaining to the parking area, and I will get to that. That's part of the variance request that's included in this application. The project is consistent with lot coverage limitations for this area. There's a 10% maximum lot coverage allowed, and this site after completion, it's going to be roughly about 3% in terms of lot coverage, so it's well compliant with that. The site and the proposed structures are also compliant with the height limitations established for the district. So now with regards to parking, there's a total of 85 gravel parking spaces that are shown throughout the facility, and I'm sorry, this is a little hard to see because it is a rather large property. But you can see there are various parking areas designated throughout the property. Many of these are existing. As is described in the staff report, there are 21 of the required spaces are being proposed to be located within the 30-foot yard setback requirement, and that's to the eastern boundary, so right along right here, if you can see where my little pointer is going. These are the parking spaces that I'm referring to with the variance. So now, of course, provided that the planning commission approves the requested variance, staff would find that the site has adequate parking for the proposed and existing use of the site. Now for the signage aspect, which is also part of the variance request, this site, there's limitations in terms of the maximum amount of sign area that you can have for freestanding signs, and for this area, it's not to exceed 40 square feet. So the applicant is proposing signs that are very similar in scale to those that are at the Stanford Inn facility that's located to the north of this site, and also the Brewery Gulch Inn, which is located just to the south of this site. And as I will describe when I get to the variance portion of my presentation, staff feels that this can be supported for this site, that a variance can be granted, given some of the topographic and also environmental constraints of this property. So now with regards to local coastal program consistency, this project does not conflict with any state or local seismic hazard policy. There's no flooding associated with the site. As I described earlier, it is in a very high fire hazard severity zone. However, both Mendocino Fire Protection District and CAL FIRE were both engaged during the referral process and provided their recommendations to staff, which have been included in the conditions of approval. This site is located within a designated conditionally highly scenic area, which means anything that's visible from State Route 1 is subject to highly scenic area policies. I'm not sure if you're familiar with this site at all, but as you may be aware, there is a large elevation change between State Route 1 and where the development is existing and proposed, such that most of the parcel is not subject to highly scenic area policies. So it's really not an issue for this project coming forward today, but I did just want to make you aware of that. This site does have Mendocino Headlands State Park bordering it on the eastern boundary, and with any sort of state park being located adjacent to This site does have Mendocino Headlands State Park bordering it on the eastern boundary. And with any sort of state park being located adjacent to a property, there is automatically established a two-hundred-foot special treatment area, which requires that any tree removal that are happening in this area are done in such a way to protect the special scenic and natural qualities, so that you don't get, you know, a, a, a clear-cut forest right next to a beautiful state park. So, staff has recommended a condition of approval requiring that any tree removal happening within two-hundred feet of the state park would require either an amendment to this coastal development permit, um, or a new coastal development permit. And that would allow state parks to then be involved in that process of the removal and ensure that there's not going to be any impacts to any of the special scenic and natural qualities. Now, with natural resources, um, this is where this project had a bit of a slowdown in the processing, because as I described before, it is highly constrained with Northern Bishop Pine Forest and Grand Fir Forest sensitive habitat areas. There was a variety of studies provided, and these were all reviewed by California Department of Fish and Wildlife, as well as California Native Plant Society came out and made a site visit and provided recommendations as well. Staff has reviewed all of these biological surveys, consulted with California Department of Fish and Wildlife and California Native Plant Society, and as you will see described in both the mitigated negative declaration and the conditions of approval, there are several mitigation measures that are required in order to ensure that impacts from the project are less than significant, given the resources that are contained on this site. So, um, I won't go through those, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about any of those mitigation measures that are proposed in the conditions of approval. With regards to utilities, the site has existing septic and water facilities. Environmental Health didn't state any concerns related to the water component at this site, as it's long been an existing facility, and they're not proposing much expansion beyond what's already existing there today. There was some concerns expressed by Environmental Health pertaining to the septic, mainly because this site is so old, they had very minimal information in their office as to what the existing septic was actually like. So, Carl Riddeman and Associates was hired. They went out, conducted an evaluation, and provided recommendations to Environmental Health. And Environmental Health provided clearance on the project as long as those recommendations from Carl Riddeman and Associates are implemented. There is a condition of approval that requires that those be implemented prior to final of any of the new structures that are proposed. The existing septic is capable of handling the, um, effluent from the current buildings, but any new structures really are where these improvements will need to be conducted before those structures are finalized and occupied. With regards to access roads, as I described previously, the, um, site has an existing encroachment onto State Route One. There's no proposed changes to that existing encroachment. CAL Trans did provide comments on the project, and just wanted to recommend a condition of approval that any future encroachments, any tree removal within the right-of-way would require an encroachment permit from their office. So, that has been included as a recommended condition of approval, but I will again state that the applicant has no intention of doing any improvements at this time to the State Route One access. The project was also referred to the Mendocino County Department of Transportation. Since there is a proposed exit onto Comanche-Yukaya Road, the applicant is required to construct a commercial access approach on that side of the property. So, that has been included as a condition of approval as recommended by County Department of Transportation. With regards to archaeological resources, there was two different surveys conducted on this site, one in nineteen seventy-six and again in nineteen ninety. This project was referred to the Mendocino County Archaeological Commission, and they accepted those surveys as sufficient, um, and provided recommendations that, in addition to the standard discovery clause, that an archaeological monitor be present during any new ground disturbing activities. So, those conditions have been included within this resolution as well. Since this site is located east of the first public road paralleling the sea, public access is not, um, this, this application is not subject to any of our public access area policies. I will note there are some existing trails that are throughout the property, though, that are used by the people that are, are staying at the facility. Now, with regards to the variance, so, um, I will not take you through each of the required findings. I've detailed in the staff report how staff feels that this application, that we can support this application for the variance and make these findings. And I will say that that's primarily due to the fact that for the parking area, there's such extensive environmentally sensitive habitat areas that doing new developments such as grading in parking areas within that sensitive habitat would create more impact on that resource. So, um, you can sort of see on this site plan here, the hatched area in here, which is where the parking area is located too. This is the only location on the property that meets sensitive habitat area setback requirements. So, um, it's a very limited area. This is where the, the new barn-style structure, the new bathhouse, where the bulk of new development is being located, as well as this proposed parking area that will require the variance. And then to speak to the signage component, um, as you can see by the site plan here, this is State Route One that travels around this edge here. This is the property boundary here. So, you can see what extensive right-of-way there is from CAL Trans in this area, as well as the elevation change that I described before. It really limits the visibility of signage on this site to the traveling public, where you only get a few seconds maybe as you're traveling down the roadway where you can actually see this sign. So, staff is supportive of a variance for this, finding that there is special circumstances applicable to the property, and that this signage is similar in size and scale to that on adjacent properties that have similar uses, as I mentioned, the Stanford Inn, as well as the Brewery Gulch Inn. So, lastly, staff conducted an initial study, and we are recommending adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. Primarily, the mitigation measures apply to sensitive resources on the site. Um, so, really, it's all about the Bishop Pine Forest and the Grand Fir Forest sensitive habitat areas. So, um, if I may, I would just, I'll, I'll read to the commission what I intend to add as condition thirty-six, and then I will type that up and put that up on the screen, so that way you guys can take a look at that. But, staff is recommending addition of condition thirty-six, which would state that the parcel subject to the resort use shall not be divided and/or sold from the remainder of the property unless all resort uses on the property are discontinued or a local coastal program amendment and/or new use permits are processed and approved for the continuation of any visitor-serving uses. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the project or the site.
You don't have that additional language, uh, in writing, do you?
I, I will write that up and put that up on the screen for you. It'll take me just a fraction of time.
Well, I understood that she was going to put it up on the screen for us too, as well, yes.
I have a few questions and clarifications. And thank you for your report. Um, I, and I know a little bit about this site, uh, living on the coast. So, the, when we, when you mentioned the, uh, Carl Riddeman around the sep- existing septic systems and if they can, uh, carry the existing, uh, proposed, uh, loads for the, basically, it's the restroom, and I noticed there's a kitchen, uh, off the side of the barn, right? So, um, where, where is the septic system? Can you put the map up and point to it?
Yes, let me show you here, so.
It's so small, and.
So, the septic, and it's not shown very clearly on this map here. It's actually located right in this area here where we have the campsite tally. And it's, it's located, um, on a slope sort of adjacent to State Route One.
Okay.
Yes.
But, uh, I'll just ask a few questions if I may, right? The other thing I have is, I understand we have a, a, a ESHA issue in the sense of, uh, the proposed new barn and new kitchen is right in the middle of the ESHA?
If, if I may correct, it actually is located in the one area that meets the setback requirements. It's fifty feet away from any sensitive habitat, yes.
Okay, so I misinterpreted that, and that's great. I'm happy about that. And I, you know, my, my concern sometimes is, you know, the, when they talk, call it a barn, and we have a kitchen there, is it going to have, uh, occupancy use for the campers to hang out in? I, I'd, I'd like that to be addressed. And if it does, then we need to address that.
I will defer to the applicant and agent to respond to what that intended uses of the structure for planning staff. That really comes more in at the building permit phase in terms of what sort of occupancy is being established there for the building permit phase. So, I would defer to the applicant on responding to what that intention is.
Okay. And then, um, the, uh, because it's in a highly scenic area, and, and, uh, so, I do have a little bit of a problem with the variance on the signs, right? I actually think the Stanford Inn sign is too large. And I, uh, so you're doubling the size of, so you're going to eighty square feet. And so, that's a concern for me personally, uh, because, uh, just as development happens, more and more signs, it starts changing the rural character of the highly scenic area. So, I, I'm not sure I would agree with the variance to give a variance there. On the parking, the existing, on the variance for the parking on the east side of the property, is the existing gravel driveway there now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, they're going to be west of the gravel driveway?
That is correct.
Right. And that allows for, uh, basically, it, it's in a safer place for the ESHA, because that's, it's like in the area that has more of a, that's in its favor.
It meets the fifty-foot setback requirement, so that's where it's appropriately located, that area.
I don't have a problem with that. I, I think that's a good decision. So, uh, with, um, da-da-da, parking signs, barn, that's it. I'll pass for right now.
Yes, Mel?
The prior proposed project in the nineties in- included the parcel to the south, I think that had a riparian area where the farmhouse is. And it was a very controversial project for many reasons. One was, they wanted to develop cabins along that ravine there. Is that not part of this parcel at all?
They are under the same ownership. They are separate legal parcels. The applicant does own that parcel as well. It, there are no visitor-serving uses associated with the resort use on that parcel at this time.
So, when I see that dotted line, I know that it may be the same ownership, but it's not part of this project?
Correct.
Okay. Other reasons it was controversial were this, I, the idea of the scenic resources, that, no, it isn't in the true designation, but the views from the bluff were very important to the people of Mendocino back then. And glare from rooftops was a concern. Of course, the buildings proposed were larger and more numerous. Much more tree removal was proposed, so that it would have, the glare would have been a factor. This not having those is a very much of an improvement, because at the time, and it may still be used, there was a promotional slogan, "Beautiful Mendocino, where the sea meet, where the forest meets the sea." Well, that's the forest. So, if the forest were gone, it would be quite a different situation. So, um, I'm glad to see there is no tree removal in this project. But I do have a kind of a concern about the trees, and it's something similar to our first project today. These bishop pines do deteriorate, and their limbs fall, and it can be very dangerous. So, for the areas where the tents are close and pretty close within the bishop pine forest, there must be a method, I would think, for safety to be able to remove some of the trees that are damaged. Would it just be, uh, a tree specialist would be called in to identify which trees, and then we come back for another permit?
I can speak to that. So, the, the requirement would be, there, there's sort of a couple options available here. If time would allow, the preference would be that they could process a modification to the use permit or get a new coastal development permit. If time does not allow, our code has provisions whereby, at the discretion of the director, um, an emergency permit can be granted. That emergency permit, it's good for sixty days. It allows you to remove the tree or whatever the hazard situation is. But there is a requirement that you come in for a standard coastal development permit or follow up with the full discretionary permit to determine any appropriate mitigation planting, anything along those lines. So, that is available to this property. Um, if there was a hazardous situation, they would simply need to come into our office and apply for that emergency permit and demonstrate how there is, um, an imminent threat to life and safety on the property. And then that is at the discretion of the director to grant that emergency permit, and those are reported to the Board of Supervisors at their next available calendar, once an emergency permit's been granted.
And possibly, depending on the extent of removal, another mitigation might be required.
Yes, exactly. And, and any removal, I will say, from other projects I've worked on, any removal of bishop pine trees, typically, there's been a replanting ratio of three to one. Uh, often, we engage with California Department of Fish and Wildlife, as they may have some success criteria that they want to see in terms of the seedlings being reestablished. Uh, one nice thing is that, um, in talking with Fish and Wildlife, I understand there's some sites that are naturally reseeding on their own these days, which has been very nice to hear. And for this site, there are conditions included in here to essentially allow seedlings to naturally regrow and prevent any sort of additional disturbance into those areas to let the understory redevelop on the site.
Good. We did a site view in the nineties. Um, but, of course, it's changed since then, and I'm sure some trees have been lost, but it's nice to know some are coming back. That's great. Regarding the signs, what is the size of each sign? Thirty-five square feet?
Let me tell you exactly by looking at it here. So, let me flip to that section here. So, we have, um, the, there's an existing sign already, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. It's located near where that farmhouse structure is on the property, near the entrance. That sign's already existing at forty-eight square feet in size. It's already non-conforming in terms of sign area. Uh, the newly proposed sign, um, well, so the existing sign on the south lawn will be replaced under this application, and it would be a new sign that's approximately thirty-five square feet in size. So, they're actually going to reduce the sign area for that front lawn. And then they're proposing an additional sign of thirty-five square feet at the north side of the property. And then lastly, there'll be a small exit-only sign at the, um, Comanche-Yukaya Road encroachment, just to ensure that people, you know, the public and people coming to the site are not going to try to use that as the access point into the facility.
Great. Thank you very much.
Julia, could you point out where that, uh, new sign would be?
The new sign, it's going to be located right in this area here, on this edge of the roadway. And then the other one is located in the front lawn on, right on this side here.
The existing one.
And the exit-only would be located with the new sign?
It would be located actually just right near the base where it encroaches out onto Comanche-Yukaya. Yes.
So, the new sign, if I may, the new sign would be at the, uh, Highway One in Comanche-Yukaya?
Correct.
Corner.
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
That's the one I'm against.
And, and I will just state, so currently, there is no signage on that side of the property. The only signage is really visible for this site when you're traveling. Really, it's when you're coming northbound on Highway One is really the main way that you see this site. Um, additionally, their mailbox always has, you know, a little Mendocino campground, uh, symbol on it. It's always have been, been that way.
I have one other question on the, um, exit-only, uh, area at the Comanche-Yukaya Road. Do you know if they plan to put in those, I don't know what you call them, but those grates where you can only go one way, otherwise your tires get ruined?
I do not believe so. Uh, I will also defer to the applicant, but that has not been proposed as part of this application at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Julia?
Yes.
Do you know the, um, composition of the roof on the new buildings?
It's going to be, I'm trying to look at, it says corrugated metal roof on those. Um, and they are located pretty far back, though, so let me flip back to the site plan here.
And if you know the color they will be?
The color, uh, let me look through the application form here. Since it's not in a highly scenic area, we don't typically require that they adhere to certain colors. If the commission so wished that they wanted to include a color, um, that's, that's certainly at your discretion if you'd like to do that.
Can we ask that, whatever color they are, I don't care about the color so much as I care about the shiny?
Well, and I, I wouldn't like orange.
Well, right, I wouldn't like orange either. Some natural color, but I also would like it to be some kind of matte color that does not reflect sunlight and that sort of stuff.
Certainly. So, the, the commission can, can make that decision if you'd like to add a condition of approval, and, and staff would be happy to write that up for you as well, if that's something you're interested in doing. I will say that standardly, like in a highly scenic area, we require that any colors and materials blend in hue and brightness with the surrounding environment. That's a very typical statement that we have on highly scenic area projects.
Yeah, I was curious as to the, um, are these what I would call semi-permanent tents? Or are people bringing their own tents, or are these tents set up and then you rent the tent?
You rent the tent. You rent the tent at these sites. These are platforms with a canvas tent that's placed on top of them. So these, it used to be more informal, you bring, you pitch your own tent. There was also group camping facilities and such, but these are platforms with a tent on top of it. The tents are removable, they're not permanent necessarily, but the, the platforms are.
They'll be stored in the barn in the winter?
I believe that's correct.
That's what they're gonna use the barn for, yeah. There, there's one other, and I don't know if it'll become an issue, but I, I'm familiar with timber harvesting in special treatment areas, which Cal Fire does allow, as long as you use what they call uneven age management or selective harvesting. And you'd have to go through the SEQA process to do this. So I don't know if we need something like that in the conditions.
Sure. I will point you to, let me just find the condition here. So there is condition number eleven contained in the resolution, states that any future tree removal proposed within the two-hundred-foot special treatment area to the state park or identified environmentally sensitive habitat areas shall require either a new coastal development permit or a modification to this per, permit. And with that, we always conduct our SEQA evaluation as we are required to when processing a discretionary permit that meets that. So yes, we would be conducting SEQA evaluation. And I will just note that that condition, condition does go on to describe the verified emergency and a potential emergency permit being possible for hazardous trees.
Good, thanks.
Any other comments or questions for staff? Then perhaps we could hear?
If I may, through the chair, I just do want to point out, I realize I left out, there was two public comment letters that were submitted for this project, and those have been distributed to you as well as posted to the website. The first is from a gentleman, John Brittingham, who lives on the west side of Highway One from this site. It was a letter of support for the project. The second one is the property owner that's located along the eastern boundary here, where the variance is proposed for the parking area. And they did express a few concerns and are requesting that the commission include some conditions of approval requiring a property line survey of the entire eastern boundary. And they would like that submitted, or a copy provided to them as the adjacent landowners. So staff, we just received this last night at seven-thirty. So staff has not had the opportunity to craft any sort of conditions and, and would defer to the commission if they're interested in adding a condition that would reflect that. I will note, staff has already included one condition of approval that requires that a map be provided. This is condition thirty-four. It states that a map shall be provided to the planning and building services prepared by a licensed land surveyor certifying the distance between the neighboring property boundary to the east and the proposed parking area in the required yard setback to provide the maximum setback for, from the parcel as possible and ensure compliance with the submitted site plan. So we have addressed the parking area. That does not include the entire eastern property boundary, though. That would really just apply to this area where the parking is to be located. So staff defers to the commission on how you would like to fall on those comments.
Julia, would you put that wording back up? That new condition?
Yes, and I have to type it up real quick, so you may want to hear from the applicant, and I can type that up for you, and then we'll look at that.
Yes, would the applicant or agent like to address this, please? And please state your name for the record.
Good morning again. My name's Kelly Grimes. I'm the architect for this project. And thank you all for taking the time to hear our application, and congratulations to the new chair. First off, I want to thank Julia Acker, that we started this process, and she was just a single lady, and now she's married, so it's been a long haul over three years, I think. And, but she's very thorough. Obviously, there's a reason why she's now heading this department. She's very good, she's very thorough. I think that this was a compromised piece of property when my client bought it three years ago, and he's done nothing but improve it. You know, the most glaring thing is the septic system. This was a campground for forty-five years, and it turned out, when we, when we started pursuing our plan, that this septic system had never been finalized. So for forty-five years on the coast, in the coastal commi, in the coastal zone, you had a campground operating without an approved septic system. So that's just one of many things. The water tank leaked. John Brittingham, the neighbor who wrote the letter of, a positive letter for the project, he shares the water supply with Mr. Hoogie. And, you know, when he bought the property, Mr. Hoogie fixed the, fixed the leak, the water supply is now consistent to the neighbor. His bill is a lot less than it used to be. So there are a bunch of different improvements. One of the things I would like to point out, because the, the main point of contention at this point is this east property line, the neighbor on that side, his voice some frustration about, you know, where exactly that property line is. My understanding is that both my client and the neighbor have hired surveyors, and they've both surveyed that property right there. So my client, once again, is more than happy to hire a surveyor, ask the, ask the neighbor to come over, so that they both can agree on exactly where that property line is, and then to mark it permanently. When this first came up, he did hire the surveyor, he put a line of logs, you know, big, three, four-foot round logs, to mark that, that edge of the, of the property. This was one of the recommendations from the, from the botanical report, was that we use natural barriers like logs to prevent campers from going to certain areas that we don't want them to go to. So, you know, without putting up a big fence and kind of destroying the whole camping experience, he's, he's tried his best to keep the campers off of that property. I think he's been very successful. Our initial plan had the parking on the property line, and the, and the drive, and the roadway was to the west. And when we heard the concerns, and we, you know, found out about the parking variance, we moved the parking to the west side of the road, and we moved the roadway over to the property, so that that would give them at least a twelve-foot buffer, so that, you know, as he, as he pointed out at one point, that people might be working on their car while they're at the campground, and they would be trespassing on his property. So we feel like we've eliminated, you know, many of those concerns. Mr. Hoogie is more than happy to, to put a fence up there, you know, something that they can agree on as neighbors, if, if it becomes more of a concern. So another thing was, there was some concern about trees and trees falling and safety. That's a huge concern of my client. One positive aspect is that the campground is closed in the wintertime. It's closed from October to May, so that's when most of your trees are dropping limbs and things like that. He does have some interest in, you know, when, whenever he, in all the development here, you know, the, the site used to have a bunch of different dirt spots where you could pitch your tent, and people would either choose a dirt spot, or they might go further into the bushes. So the fact that he's, he's erected platforms at specific spots, so the idea, and it was celebrated by the, the California Native Plant Society and the Botanical Report, was that he's built these permanent platforms, and that kind of controls where the people are going. People aren't going further and further into the woods each time with their tent and destroying plants and native species. So, you know, but locating those platforms was obviously, he took into account where the trees were, where the, the limbs are, all that stuff. So, you know, you know, all of the tents are kind of clustered into, into groups, he's, he labeled some different names, Albion, Comche Elk. But they're all kind of clustered into different areas, and the areas are somewhat clear. So, you know, there aren't like trees hanging over the tents, things like that. As far as the signs, I think Julia did an excellent job talking about the signs. There is no sign on the north side of the property, so anyone coming from Fort Bragg basically passes the property before they realize that that was the property. And when you're talking about people coming camping on a Friday night, it's dark, it's a, it's a problem. And so what we did was, we, we designed a sign that looks almost identical to the Stanford Inn sign, which is a very, you know, it's, it's not a solid sign, it's kind of, it looks like lattice work or a trellis. I think it's, I think it's pretty, it's pretty responsive to the highly scenic zone and the, and the, the whole idea of camping is that, you know, this is a natural environment, we're not trying to, to put up a neon sign. Let's see. Oh, the, there was a question about the, putting one of those cattle or those things on the road that stop people from coming up. I believe that the emergency exit going off onto Comanche-Yucaya, it's part of the emergency plan that perhaps if there's a fire or some sort of catastrophe happening up there, the campers are all directed to go out the way that they came in, and the emergency personnel will come up the emergency road. That way, you can get the emergency personnel up on top without creating a, a nightmare. So there was some discussion with Cal Fire about this, and as well as the local volunteer fire department. And as far as the roof goes, I think that we have a, a metal roof. The idea is that it's, you know, it, it's, it blends in. We don't want some, you know, affinito blue, or whatever you want to call it. We, you know, the idea is it's a dark bronze, and a, and a, my recommendation is, once we get into the building construction, is that it actually would be a comp shingle roof. It would be a matte color, it would disappear better. I think that he initially was thinking metal for fire purposes, so, but that, you know, it's, it's not visible from anywhere. I don't think that it's a highly scenic aspect of this project, the, the roof of the barn. But, you know, it would, if it was metal, it would be like a dark bronze, and otherwise it would be a dark charcoal comp shingle. So something that would hopefully disappear. Oh, the, what the barn was gonna be used for is, I think someone hit it on the head, is it basically a store of the tents for the five months. Right now, they're being stored in these big containers, and it requires about three or four of these large containers. It's quite an effort to store these tents for the winter, and, you know, pull out a tent in the springtime, it's not all moldy. So the barn was the idea, and then once in the summertime, that you could also use it as, you know, you could set up ping-pong tables. When they're inclement weather days, you could have games inside there. You may be able to have some sort of nature lectures. They would also be open to locals as well as the campers. So I think that the barn is, there are a bunch of different opportunities, all of them having to do somewhat with nature and that whole thing. The, we, we toured the, the site with the California Native Plant Society, which was very helpful. They gave us a bunch of suggestions, how we can use, you know, the fact that we are within an Esha, we can use this to educate people. And, you know, so we're gonna put signs around, you know, so that people can, people can be living in nature and also respecting nature and learning about nature. So I think that we're very, as, as a resident of the coast, I feel that we're very fortunate that Mr. Hoogie is the person who bought this campground. It was for sale for many, many years, and it really fallen into some bad times, you know, homeless people were living up there. So I feel that in the last three years, it's not, done nothing but, had good things for it. Thank you.
Question.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, there is an ongoing survey happening that would address this one comment letter?
No, there's not an ongoing survey. There has been a survey done, and the, the surveyor came up and marked the area, basically, where the roadway is. He just did that, you know, just a small portion of the eastern boundary. And he marked the two ends, and then Mr. Hoogie put up some logs. Apparently, this wasn't, you know, I'm not really sure about the neighbors, what their agenda is, but apparently that, that, that hasn't alleviated his concerns. I, I think some of his concerns are, well, I won't get into that, but there's no ongoing survey.
Well, maybe we're far during the homeless period, but...
Yeah, but what we'd like to do is, is have a surveyor and have the neighbor there, so that we can agree that this survey is accurate, it's correct, and then, you know, whether we erect logs or whether we put up some sort of fencing, that's between the two owners. But obviously, we would prefer to do something that's more natural and keeping with the campground, you know, rather than some eight-foot-tall wooden fence.
Well, it, it actually sounded like this commenter's concern was much more about, do we know where the boundary is and where the construction is happening? It, it doesn't sound like he, or, as I read this, which I just saw this morning, he wasn't really necessarily asking for fencing or anything like that.
Yeah, so this, the one that he sent last night...
He was asking for clarity about the boundary.
Yeah, so there, there's been some back and forth with the neighbor, and I think that the fact that he sent this at seven-thirty last night shows his reluctance to, to even voice his opinion, because I think they're working it out on the side. He didn't want to make it a big deal, but he does, he, you know, he wants to make sure that part of this is that it's surveyed and it's properly shown where that property line is. I think that's a legitimate concern, and we're more than happy.
And that is actually underway, right?
Yeah, well, we're more, we're going to survey it, and we're gonna invite him over, and we're gonna mark the survey, and then, you know, what we use to, for the barricade is between those two. Does that answer your question?
I guess. I think we'll have to go back to staff and find out how we deal with this in the future.
It's a condition, right? It's a, it's one of the conditions. Condition thirty-six, I think it is, is that we need to provide a map that has been done by a registered surveyor.
I do remember that.
Okay.
Yes, and if I may, through the chair, I will just clarify that that's condition thirty-four, and that is solely pertaining to the parking area.
I had a question for the agent, Kelly. Hi, Kelly. The, two things. May I suggest about the sign? Everybody's saying you only see it going northbound on Highway One. Why don't we move it on the other side of the driveway, so we have one sign both sides? Or set it so that you can see it like so many other properties? Rather than, there is no sign right now on the corner of Comanche-Yucaya Road and Highway One. And it's nice not to have another sign there, because Stanford Inn has a, a lot of, you know, I know they have their sign, but it's impactful with the fence, and it's nice to see that will change the feel of that intersection heading southbound. So if you want to see a sign from both directions, that should be dealt with at the entry, the driveway entry. And I'm encouraging that for my fellow commissioners here, too. And I think, you know, you've done a great job in, you know, locating buildings outside of Eshas, the, the new ones, and I think we could come up with a solution for the sign, one sign.
If I may respond through the chair?
Yes.
So the applicant actually did originally come in with a sign proposed that would be more located in an area, so it could be visible to both sides. Unfortunately, our code does not allow that sign to be established in that area. It was located within the Caltrans right-of-way as well, and they do not allow signage within their Caltrans right-of-way. So that's been the challenge here, is like, as I, as you see here on the site plan, this is the Caltrans right-of-way here. So a lot of the area where a sign could be located that would be visible to both northbound and southbound lanes, they will not permit a sign to go in that area. So that's been the real limitation for the applicant, but again, the, the commission has the authority to determine if they wish to approve this variance or not.
Are you saying you can't, at the entry of the driveway, move it on the south side?
That is correct.
And, and how, the Caltrans setback is a sixty-foot setback from centerline?
Well, this is their right-of-way, actually. So this is their right-of-way, and they do not, it's different than the corridor preservation setback. So we have the corridor preservation setback through our code that ensures that we're leaving adequate access in case roadways need to be expanded in the future. For this site, this is just the right-of-way from Caltrans, so it's rather expansive. It's one of the largest ones I've seen up and down the, the coast here.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So like Stevenswood, right down the road, can put their sign right on the driveway, because the right-of-way there is three feet from the edge of the road. In our situation, it's like a hundred feet. So if we put our sign on the driveway, we'd be back in the woods and no one would see it going north or south.
But you already have a sign near the road, Mendocino Campground.
They have a sign on the, on the lawn, which is set way back there by the buildings, at the very bottom left of this, it's down in there.
But that, that's the one we see from the highway. Well, can't you put it on the opposite side of the road? I understand you're gonna, it still would be blocked from the north because of the trees there.
If I may clarify, you're meaning on this side of the driveway, if I'm showing on the site plan up here on this side, right in here? Is that what you're referring to, on the other side of the driveway?
I'm, I'm talking about, well, originally, I was saying the south, so that we could catch the northbound.
Oh, okay.
But, but because the, you, the tree line, it's farther back.
It would also, I will just note, there's a riparian area, right in that area, so the concern would be for us of whether or not planning could support that location.
Right. So the, so the reality also could be just one sign.
That is the, the...
Yeah, we don't have to approve a variance.
Yes, exactly.
As I stated before, yes, that's at the discretion of the commission here.
And the last thing I want to get back to is the barn kitchen, because I want to be very clear, it's storage in the winter with all the equipment, and it's gonna be, have a recreational use in the summer, in, interior. Okay? Because a barn doesn't define that. So... Because a barn doesn't define that. So it's a storage built, let, I want to get the right language. And I think by just calling it a barn is not really being clear about the full use of what a barn is to what it's going to be used in this case. Because there's going to be recreation in there, whether there's going to be, if it's pouring outside, people will throw up tables and eat in there. I'm not opposed to that. I just want to be honest about what's really happening.
And if I may respond through the chair, I will, I will say that the barn, and we're terming it as a barn-style structure because barn has a certain connotation in our zoning code as well and there's limitations. It's clearly defined as being for the housing of livestock and agricultural equipment. So this is more of a, and that is stated in the description that it's a barn-style structure, so it's not actually a barn. I think we're using barn as sort of the short answer version of it, but it's really is, the style of it is meant to be, as you know, like there's events.
So what are we calling it?
It would be essentially an accessory structure to the visitor-serving use there. And certainly when the applicant would come in for building permits for this, they will have to define what that use is within that structure, the occupancy, exactly.
That's fine. I, because it, I think it says barn here. It doesn't say accessory unit, accessory building somewhere in my notes. I just have that. So I just need that clarification because I interpret barn as something other.
Yeah, and to clarify, the kitchen is for serving like, you know, breakfast things in the morning to the campers is the idea and that's a fairly rigorous process to, you know, you can't, you can't give them a banana in their tent if you don't have a certified kitchen. So that's the whole idea there.
Right.
And it's screened in and it's, I don't think it's for camper use.
No, I think that's all fine. I just, it was more.
Yeah.
It didn't seem like it, a barn. The use of it is not really a barn. It's a storage building with a mixed use.
And if I may through the chair, I will apologize. My request stated a barn and if you read the applicant's statement in the staff report, that's where it is referred to as a barn-style structure. I did refer to it as a barn-style structure throughout the remainder of the report as well, but I will just clarify that. So certainly it is, the style of the building is meant to be looking like a barn, but the intended use is not as a barn as defined under the zoning code.
Right. So what, what language are we putting in there as the use? I would like, that's kind of important.
May I ask a question? So when it, when it comes to us again for, or will it come to us again for the, for the actual construction?
It will not.
It will not? It will, it'll be through staff?
Correct.
Yeah.
So it sounds to me like what it is is a storage unit, a storage structure. Does it, will that be during the next phase or can we do that now?
We could do that now. We could add a condition. This would be my recommendation to the commission would be we could add a condition of approval, maybe condition 37, which would just be more of like an advisory statement stating that the barn-style structure shall be used for tent storage during the off-season and camper use during the camp season. And I'm not sure if that provides the level of comfort for the commission on clarifying the intended use of the structure.
Could we call it recreational use or something like that? Because what we don't want is a bunch of people camping in there, right?
Right.
Right.
So maybe we should call it camper use. We should just call it recreational use.
Because then.
For the vacation.
Right. Because I think when the applicant comes in for a building permit at the working drawings, they're going to have to define occupancy and they're going to have to define, you know, the layers that take place in something with a recreational use or that's not a storage building. Totally different. And, you know, the camp, we need to protect, that's, that's the right language to protect, I think, how I see it.
So if I can direct you to the screen here, I've typed up two additional conditions here and I'm hoping, is everyone able to see that? Otherwise I can increase the magnification a little bit. So the first is condition 36, which I read into the record pertaining to if the parcels are ever sold separately in the future. And that states that the parcel subject to the resort use shall not be divided and/or sold from the remainder of the property unless all resort uses on the property are discontinued or a local coastal program amendment and/or new use permits are processed and approved for the continuation of any visitor-serving uses. Then condition 37, if the commission so chooses that you'd like to include this, would read that the barn-style structure shall be limited to use as tent storage during the off-season and recreational use during the camping season.
That would work for me.
Excuse me, Julia, is that, is that going to be used as a dining room?
No.
No? Okay.
I don't think there's any intent to that. I think the tent is, I mean, the intent is mainly to use it as a storage, but obviously, you know, he might buy some ping pong tables or, you know, there's some, you know, people come camping and they want to have some activities. But I, as far as a dining room, I, my, as the architect, I have no, I, no knowledge of that being even discussed.
I would like to note that there is a breakfast screened-in area that includes a roof as well over it, so there is a ready area for campers if there is weather events or something to be able to get outside of that, that weather and undercoverage.
Because there will be a lot of weather events and, and I'm not sa, I just want to make sure if it's going to be used for people to flow into there. And it probably will be. That's my predicting, prediction. I just want to cover the county in the sense of occupational use of that building, the correct occupational use.
And so if I may, just through the chair, I'll just add that county council just suggested that I remove the word tent from the beginning of, in terms of referring to storage, so that way it's not pigeonholing them into only being able to put tents in there for storage and be able to have any other, you know, hammocks or things that are associated with the existing campground use can be stored in there during the off-season as well.
And, and Julia, may I ask, the barn-style structure, why do we need the barn-style structure? Why don't we just, I, is that going too deep into the report because everything's written like that?
Is that, really, if I may through the chair, my concern would be removing that. I could imagine that a future planner may have a challenge of determining which structure is this exactly referring to since we have referred to it as the barn-style structure throughout the report.
Yes. Okay.
And could I clarify? I believe you said a commercial kitchen or what did you call the kitchen?
Yeah, it has to be commercial standards. I mean, you know, it's, it's for breakfast stuff, you know, so I don't know how extensive the hood and all that is going to be, but commercial kitchen just basically means a three-basin sink, you know, with some cove base up the walls.
Really? There was more than that, but. And I have one other question. I was a little confused because you mentioned that people could go out and camp anywhere, I guess previously, but now you're going to have the platforms and it sounded like people may be bringing their own tents? Or am I incorrect and their tents will be, it sounds like, since you're going to have storage, that that's kind of changing?
Yeah, no, no one's allowed to bring their own tent. It's, the tents are all set up on platforms, so where, where you can camp is, is controlled.
Right. Thank you.
Julia, I had one other question. I was under the impression that the state park actually was adjacent to this property, but it's not. And so the special treatment area, which is 200 feet from State of California Park there is, are we talking about, are there points along this property line that are within 200 feet?
I can understand your concern. I was surprised myself to find that actually this area, if you look up on the screen here, this area right behind the eastern boundary of this property on this side is owned by State Parks Department of Recreation. So there is a border here as well as State Parks owns land on this side as well. So if there is any sort of tree removal happening within 200 feet of those boundaries, that's subject to the special treatment area. And then additionally, that condition goes on to also include any of the environmentally sensitive habitat areas throughout the property as well.
Well, I was talking about the parking area.
Oh, okay. Excuse me.
Okay. But anyway, the, the parking area is, is not adjacent to the state park.
That's correct.
So, but it's a parking area within 200 feet of the state park?
It is not.
So why, why are we, why is there a concern, was there a concern regarding the parking in the special treatment area?
There is not. The only concern related to the parking area was expressed by the adjacent landowner primarily, they, they own the property all along the eastern boundary where the parking area is to be located and their concern was about encroachment onto their property as well. But there is no special treatment area that would be applied to this portion of the, the boundary here. And the variance request is really necessary because our code requires that only one of your required spaces can be located within your yard setbacks and there's 21 spaces proposed at this time.
Okay, I'm sorry for the confusion.
No, no problem. Glad I could clarify.
I thi, I think most of us are in agreement except for the sign issue and I'm not sure if that could be addressed for us to get full approval for the application. I, I'm not sure.
Well, I was going to, you know, move to approve the project with the parking lot variance that they're asking for, but not the sign variance. And then I can approve it with the two new added written in red conditions and I would have, it'd have my support.
So have we heard from the public yet before we get to the commission?
No.
Could I, could I ask one more question?
Certainly.
Would you, Mr. Grimes, tell us again why you want the sign on, or your applicant wants the sign on the Compteeukiah side?
Yeah, if we could go back to that map. As you can.
Would you like to use the pointer on here?
Sure. As you can see, the, the road, you know, it curves around like this, right? So if you're coming from the south, you're coming from about here, right in front of you, right here on the lawn, it's about 100 feet off of the highway, there is, there are letters on the grass, right? So it's in front of you up on the hill and before this, there's a spot where there's a big water tower and on the water tower it says Brewery Gulch Inn. Okay? Those are set way off the, way off the highway and they're large letters so that you can see them from the highway. This sign is very effective for people coming from the south and it's, it fits all the requirements. When my client bought the property, he was concerned that no one from the north ever sees a sign. There is zero signage coming from the north. And so basically you travel south until your GPS says you have passed your destination, then you turn around and you come back and you go, hey, there it is, there's the sign and then you pull in. So you get some people arriving at the campground that are not really happy because they just spent, you know, several minutes driving around. So the idea was to put it down on the driveway like everyone else, have a sign that is out there, hanging maybe from a tree or something and you could see it from both directions. Caltrans shot us down very quickly saying you cannot put a sign in our right-of-way. So if you come, you know, the, there's a big, this is a big arching turn here. So even if we had a sign, you know, this sign right here is only visible when you're about right here on the highway. So anyone coming from the north, I don't see how you can expect someone to conduct a business, you know, no one from the north is going to see your business. It just, it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem fair. And Stamford Inn, which is across the road, it's over here, and their entrance is way back here. It's on Compteeukiah Road. But it says in the code that, you know, if you're off of the main artery, you can have a sign on the highway pointing to your stuff. So there was discussion in this whole three-year process that, hey, maybe we're better off to put one sign on Compteeukiah, put our entrance on Compteeukiah, you know, and even Caltrans would say, you know how they have those little signs that say camping or gas and food, you know, those little brown signs, next exit? We could have gotten one of those signs and had it direct us to Compteeukiah and then go off the road. But the, I mean, that just started getting real convoluted. The, the roadway from Compteeukiah coming up is much steeper, it's much more dangerous. So at the end, we decided that the, the existing approach was the best and to ask for a sign at the corner of Compteeukiah where there already is on the other side of Compteeukiah, there's a sign identical to what we are proposing. I mean, I copied his design. I think it's a very, in, in keeping with the coast, sign. It's all made out of natural wood, it's gray, it's weathered, you know, it's simple and yet informative. And so we did the similar sign on the exact opposite side of the road and.
And can you point to where that sign would be?
Yeah.
It's going to be right in this area here.
Exactly, right there. So when you're coming across the bridge.
That's what you'll see.
South of Mendocino, you would see the sign.
Can I ask a question? Kelly?
Yes.
Can you not get a sign where Brewery Gulch sign is? Can you not put up a campground sign right there? Show me where the Brewery Gulch property is on the map to this.
Show me back here to adjacent.
Yeah. Do you have one with, with the roads, your driveway? Yeah. Oh, that's not helpful. Go back to your site map. It should be pretty close to the, your.
It doesn't quite. So the Brewery Gulch Inn sign is going to be located right in this sort of area here.
Right. Okay.
And I will just state that there, we have very limited circumstances where you can do off-site signs too, so that has, that's not something that's really feasible for this property. We limit it to commercial industrial zones and there are none in this area.
Which is good. Yeah.
I just have a problem on that corner. There's nothing there and it's a lovely, it's a lovely corner that there's nothing there where you want to put it.
Now.
You could put it on the other side where Jeff Stamford's is and put an arrow.
If I could refresh your memory there, Commissioner Wedeman, there is a lot of electrical wires and telephone poles in that area. There are a lot of dead standing trees in that corner because it's a marshland, it's pretty flooded. I, I think it's a fantastic spot for a sign and it's, it's simply asking for, you know, this is a business enterprise and he's just asking for people to know that it's there.
Right. Okay. We just disagree.
Kelly, I mean, if you do put the sign there, I mean, does it say like 300 feet or 500 feet? Because if it's dark and it's foggy and you're driving down there on a Friday night.
Yeah, I think it just has a, as I recall, it just has an arrow, you know, next left or something like that.
No, I'm trying to put my hand on it.
Okay. I can't remember exactly.
And let's see here, you know what? I will pull up these exhibits so that way we can take a look at them real quick. It'll take me just a couple of minutes here to pull them up so I can find them.
We're allowed to have several hours of public testimony while we're waiting, huh?
That's why I'm here, sir.
Well, could we maybe do the public hearing?
Can we do that? Can we open the public hearing?
Yes.
Well, now open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is close.
Let this kick first, but.
Sorry, Julia.
As the hordes approach the podium.
I think I might only have them in printed format. If you'd like, I can, we can pause. If we could take a five to 10-minute break again, I can get copies made of what the signage looks like and that way we can distribute that to the commissioners as well.
Why don't you do that?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like that.
Okay, we'll take a break for as long as Julia takes.
I guess there's nothing else we can do here, huh?
We're coffee.
Yeah.
More coffee.
Coffee break.
Yeah, it's just the very last page.
Do you want me to blow it up a little more?
Oh, no, that should be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, staff, perhaps you could explain the paper in front of us?
So what we have just distributed, and there's copies available in the back of the room as well, is a copy of what the signage would look like. So as you can see on here, it's split out between what would be the, the different signs. The first would be the, the north sign, which is the one that would be proposed to be located near the, the Kamtoukaya Road and State Highway One intersection. And that's the first one you see that says Mendocino Grove, modern camping. It is, it will be about, in terms of full height, probably about 15 feet in height, you can see the, the posts alone are about 12 feet in height, and it's gonna be of redwood construction. And then they've blocked out the, the signs, so each section is going to be having, you know, just the one word, "The Mendocino Grove, modern camping, camping," and then vacancy or no vacancy would be the other there. The last one is going to be, you'll see there are the north sign at the Kamtoukaya driveway, that's at the very bottom of the page, and just states that Mendocino Grove, pedestrian path only, vehicle entrances from Highway One around the corner. So that's gonna direct people back to the, the State Route One entrance. And then you see where they've done a calculation at the very top of the page, on the most right-hand side, of what that sign area actually is for the lettering. And then they're showing what the existing south sign looks like, which says Mendocino Campground, 48 square feet, and above that is the proposed new sign that would be located in that same area on the south lawn. And it's actually smaller in size than the existing sign.
To just be clear, the, the pointed one, this one, is, it's just a framework with suspended signs, it's not one big solid thing.
That is correct. Only the, behind each of the words would be solid.
Yes, and the truss, the, basically, it's a kind of a truss situation. It's 16 feet wide by 15 feet tall? More or less?
Yeah.
With, with the Mendocino Grove, modern camping, vacancy in solid painted lettering of some sort.
Right.
Okay.
And I tried to show that, you know, see, there's a person, a six-foot-tall person underneath the sign, and there's some bushes and things, and there's that dimension off to the right that says 12 feet above bushes and right-of-way. Because the idea is that there's a bunch of bushes, and it's kind of a marshy area, and so the idea is that the sign is up high because you have to be able to see it. It's, you know, it's not like right on the side of the highway and it's 20-foot-tall sign.
And I'm sorry that the image is in the shade here, so it makes it rather hard to see, but what I have up on the screen right here, you can see, this is the Stamford Inn sign, and it's hard to see, but it has a similar little roofline structure to what is proposed here that goes over the top of it, and then also has similar, where just the lettering is blocked out. It's not completely solid wood all the way down, but the lettering is just what's solid behind that. So that was the sign that I believe Mr. Grimes and the applicant were modeling this after.
This sign is...
Oh, excuse me, am I going to the wrong sign?
This is on the north side of Stamford Inn, and now if you go a little bit south, and you turn to the left, and you turn the left again, straight ahead, there should be, to your right.
Oh, excuse me.
I think it's to the right, to the right.
There we go, thank you.
Okay, so there's the sign that I modeled this after. So Stamford Inn, okay, has this size sign on both the south side of their property, and we just saw the north side of their property. So they have two signs, the same size as what Commissioner Wedeman is saying is, you know, kind of an excessive sign. They have two of them, and we're asking for two. So I don't see how we can deny the variance when our neighbor has exactly what we're asking for. Right? I mean, isn't that the idea of a variance?
So while we're in this, looking at sort of the street view here, this is looking at, this is the corner of the property, as you see it from, this is Kamtoukaya Road right here, State Route One on this side. The sign, it's a little hard to see in terms of elevation here, but it would be roughly located up in the, the tree sort of area back, back in here, would be where the signage would be. And the reason for the height of it is to pop it above existing vegetation so that it is visible, rather than having to clear vegetation around it to make the sign visible.
So you're saying it's up Kamtoukaya Road more than off of Highway One?
Well, it's, it's on the corner, but it would be more visible, yes, up the Kamtoukaya roadside, just because of the extensive area of that right-of-way.
Maybe we could just have it stayed, so we could see it, where you wanna put it.
That's fine.
Is that, is that where you want it, is where your cursor is?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's...
I can show a little better. I think you're gonna want...
I think it's right in here.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, I know, like, come on.
Excuse me.
But I mean, the old highway came along here, and there's a bunch of these wires.
If you wanna put it back there, that's fine.
I think it's right in here.
Right.
And, you know, right across the street, the Stamford Inn has one right there.
Personally, it doesn't bother me at all, I think it's fine. I like the idea, I mean, I feel that, I certainly understand why you need to sign there, and I think you've gone out of your way to make it look like the, similar to the Sanford Inn, and I don't live on the coast, but I am there three months out of the summer, and I'm perfectly fine with that, but that's my opinion.
Thank you.
I, I support the idea of a sign, rather than having out-of-town guests wandering around making U-turns, I, I think it would be safer to have a sign so people knew, know when the turn was coming up.
I agree.
I would say that I'm so glad that the campground's gonna continue to be important.
Yes.
And I wish them the most success possible, and I think I would support a sign here, but I do appreciate the concern.
Yeah.
I like this format of sign instead of some big billboard kind of thing, too. I mean, that is what I was worried about, is if this was one big solid piece of board, I was not gonna like it.
Right. And I, I would support it also. I, I am impressed with the style of the sign. I think it's gonna blend in well with, with the landscape.
All right.
If, if I may, I know there had been a question, oh, excuse me.
Thank you for looking it up.
And I know there had been a question about the existing sign on the south lawn, so if you just bear with me, I'm gonna show you, this is your approach as you're coming northbound on Highway One, and so as you're coming across here, you see this is where the property is, where the signage is located, you see there's some tree cover in here, and then as you keep moving closer, this is the sign off in the far distance there, it's hard to see, but that's the sign right there. And so that's really what the issue is here, is there's tree cover as well as this limited distance because there's this ravine here. And then as you keep traveling down, you can see then here is the entrance to the actual property, right in here. And it's a little tucked away, so it, I can understand how someone can drive past it.
Any other questions for the applicant or for staff?
No, that was good.
Thank you.
We've had the public hearing, so I think at this point, we're looking for a motion. And I, I, I'm not sure, because we do have some new commissioners, a lot, most of the time, the motion comes from the district where the item is being discussed, so I didn't know if you knew that or not.
Okay. All right. Well, since it's my district, uh, I make a motion to, I make a motion to approve U-2016-0015/V-2017-001 for proving, as discussed, with the addition of, the clarification of 35, 36 point, or that's 36 and 36.37? Are you crossing it out, 36? 35, with the addition of 36 and 37 written.
Thank you, my apologies, that's track changes.
With the approval of the variance for the parking to the east side, within the 30-foot setback, but without the approval of the sign for the second sign. That's my motion.
Do we have a second? Okay. So I guess the motion dies for lack of a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do we have another motion?
I want to make a motion that we approve the project.
Thank you. I move that we approve the project and U-2016-0015/V-2017-001, with the addition of condition 36 and 37, and approving both the variances.
If I may, through the chair, I would just like to request that that also include adoption of the mitigated negative declaration for the project.
Yes, it does.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. I guess we have a vote?
Yes.
Wait a minute.
Yes.
Yes. A yes, but I think we missed, didn't we miss something?
Warner and Nelson.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson.
And I think...
And Warner.
And Warner. And I'm a yes as well.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. You did a good job.
You made a good salary.
I know, I know.
Okay, I think we're down to item seven, matters from staff.
We have no matters from staff, but we're available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions at staff?
Do we have any updates on the new buildings as a result of the fires?
We can certainly come back and bring you a comprehensive report on that. I do know we've, we are still steadily issuing single-family homes, it's a, it's a mixture of stick build versus modular still. I would wanna come back with definitive numbers for you, though, which I don't have at my fingertips here, but...
We can do that at the next meeting.
Well, we will...
Just curiosity question.
We will bring that forward under the director's report at the next meeting.
I had one other thing just to ask staff, since we've had a change of director, is we did express an interest in hearing something about the inland water study, and if there's ever a dull moment in the agenda, I would really like to hear about that.
I am very happy that you mentioned that, because actually, we were looking right now to see if environmental health staff will be available on February 21st to be able to do that. Since we right now have a one-item agenda for that meeting, we're looking to see if we could add a discussion pertaining to the inland groundwater study as well, too. So that will be coming forward in the future.
Yes, and I wondered if we would, I had asked for it before, but get a copy of the scheduled work projects for the year? Or, I don't know if they're scheduled, but proposed?
Yes, you're referring to the board priorities that were given to us in November. We will be sure to bring that to the next meeting as well. Yes.
Is there, is there a possibility we could have our meetings at 10 o'clock? Just because of the cold? If that's a hassle, it's fine.
Well, we actually do usually try and have them at 10 o'clock in December, January, and February, but I don't know why we didn't this February, but we actually do, otherwise...
It's fine.
Earlier is February.
Yes. Summer's not so bad.
No.
These winter mornings are pretty...
I'm not sure why we didn't do it for this meeting, I guess it just...
Forgot.
... dropped the ball, but, but...
Okay.
But that's fine.
That's totally great, yes.
In the winter, because we do understand that's a long, cold slog there.
Well, our February 21st meeting then be at nine or 10?